Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending the meeting today. For those that are going to be listening, we have Erin Beham, Bonnie Bird, and Donald Harris who are members of the Accountability Committee. And the first item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November meeting. So I will need a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Any question, changes? Then all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Thank you. And then we go to the first item in the agenda, which is the update of the Wexley Grant Community School. Lisa?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, and good afternoon, committee members. As Dr. Lopez just shared, we are here this afternoon to discuss the progress of Wexler Grant, a K-8 school currently in their third year of Commissioners Network and up for an approval for an additional fourth year of Commissioners Network at the end of this year. With us here today, we have Principal David Dia. And from the department's turnaround team, we are joined by Carol Dibble, Wexler Grant's point of contact, and Iris White, the point of contact for the district. We also have our chief academic officer, Irene Parisi, here as well. The school has prepared an overview of the data available, as well as highlights the next steps, which the New Haven team will reference soon. Principal Dia is currently in his third year of serving as Wexler Grant's principal. A major focus of Wexler Grant over the past three years have been around improving teaching and learning, developing the capacity of their staff and leadership team, and engaging community partners in supporting the school's goals and families' needs. In terms of academic performance, Wexler Grant has exceeded the SBI and Smarter Balance Growth Model as set out by the ESMA milestone targets in 2018 and 19. While Wexler Grant has made progress and improvements, there is still work to be done, specifically around improving attendance. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Principal Dia to share a bit more, and then open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Principal Dia?
Lisa, thank you so much for that introduction. Good afternoon, committee members. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Just one slight correction, if I may, and this is no fault of Lisa. Sometimes they're tilted over my, my last name, the "I" is missing. So my name is David Dyer, not Dia. All right? So I just wanted to just slight correction there. All right.
Thank you.
So thank you, Lisa. First of all, I want to say thank you to Carol Dibley as well and Iris White, because they have been with me through this process over the last, what, three years? I know Iris went on to Big and Better Things, and now I have Carol, which is working with me. So thank you so much, Carol. And I want to thank Dr. Tracy, who has been with me from the beginning of this process. She's not here as yet, but I want to tell her thanks. And the New Haven School District, who has supported me. I also want to thank my teachers and staff and my leadership team, because without them, we would not be here today. All right? And my students and their families. So, Wexler Grant, over the last two and a half years, going into our third year, we have been working on improving the leadership, the teacher capacity, and student capacity in terms of teaching and learning. And as Lisa said, we are developing the capacity of our students and our staff, as well as trying to engage the families in Wexler Grant. My big focus was really on really ensuring that the teaching and learning at Wexler Grant is at an excellent level, where students are graduating and getting ready and prepared for the next steps, which is high school and beyond. And I've been really focusing on creating strategies on how we accomplish that task. So right now, a couple of the highlights over the last two and a half years was really that, as you can, if you take a look at the presentation, is that we exceeded the ELA and MAT, SBI, and SBAC voting from 2017 to 2018. We did really well there. And part of that of us doing well was really taking a focus on developing teacher capacity. How we went about doing that was focusing on the Tier One instruction that we observed was happening at Wexler Grant. And once we observed that, we created strategies in terms of providing structures and professional development that we thought would be instrumental in getting students learning and increasing and having excellent teaching within the classrooms. Looking at the data was, was really an eye-opener for us at Wexler Grant. And it's been a challenge, because we had to do a mind shift and a cultural shift as well. And so part of the structure was implementing professional learning and building the capacity, because we know that at certain points, the money's not going to be here forever. So the end game is, how do I build this capacity for teachers and staff to continue this good work when we don't have funding to hire consultants or funding to support with materials and supplies for students? And that's something that I really wanted to really focus on, and so that our teachers and staff can still do that excellent Tier One instructions and intervention. So we engage in coaching cycles. We engage in a series of focused collegial walkthroughs, which we are continually doing even in a remote setting right now. We gauge in professional learning and peer observation with colleagues, and that has been good. One of the things that we looked at, we incorporated data teams and SRBI, the process, and those structures were put in place to build really the capacity of the teachers, so that we can examine in real time the data and use that to guide our planning and instruction, as well as setting goals for students and really following to fidelity that for intervention. Part of that, as we go along in each year, we wanted to maximize the learning time and structures. And one thing that we sat down after the first year to do, and it was actually look at, how do we maximize the learning time and structures? And one of the things that we did was, last year and the year before, was to restructure, restructure our ELA and math blocks in grades K through four. So we wanted a really high-intensified ELA and math block for every minute of the day that was really maximized, to get the best out of those blocks in terms of instructions. We continued with our ELA framework by working with different consultants. And some of these consultants that we really was intentional about was Hill for Literacies. Right now, he's doing a really good job with the teachers and building their capacity and supporting us as well as we make that shift in terms of high-level instructions. We have been working with HMH, which is Hawthorne, Niflin, and Harcourt, and the Center for Collaborative Work Classroom, which does Making Meaning and Being a Writer in Grades K to four. We also work with the Math Solutions, who comes out and really look at the math block and the math instruction. And this year, we had decided that we were going to stay away from math in focus and try, we did a research base, looking at big ideas, because I thought that would be, give us a bigger span for a buck. We wanted to improve the math within Wexler Grant and started to increase that and really, really teach our students what it is like to really understand the math concepts. And so we believe that big ideas after doing research would be the best software out there or the best program for our students. So we really invested in that. We also established intervention blocks as well, which is a key to this. And part of the funding was helping us to hire tutors. And tutors, to be honest, especially in a time like now, in remote setting, has been key, because they are able to pull small groups of kids and work with them on areas that they are struggling with. They're able to support teachers in their teaching and learning as well. And so implementing those intervention blocks in grades K through eight was instrumental for us to do. Like with everything else, you have the highlights and you have areas that we have to grow. Every day is a learning experience. Every day, we learn from the attendance. Students' attendance has been a challenge here at Wexler Grant. And over the last few years, couple of years, student chronic absenteeism rate increased. We increased it in, it increased from 25.2% in 2017, 18, to 32.8%. We brought it on from the year before, which was 16, 17, but then it went back up. In the 1920 school year, which is last school year, it went back to about 26.2%, which is an improvement overall, but it's still a far away from the state rate and state average. So that has been a challenge for us. Our leadership team, though, and the attendance team have been working really, really hard with, with the attendance and trying to increase the attendance of students, especially as it pains to. We have been including a lot of mentorships and partnering with the community leaders that we have. We have done a lot of weekly attendance, a lot of incentives for students, and utilizing our captains to really go to home visits and really supplying students and their families with what is it that they need, which is distribution of materials and supplies, Chromebooks that we have bought for our kids, and which at this point in time, they really, really need that. And really supporting the families and increasing family activities. So we have really done a lot of work around that. In fact, this Friday, December 18, we're having a Day of Giving Distribution Day again, where it's an incentive day as well as a day where we can connect with students and staff in practicing social distance and being safe as well. But it's a way of trying to gain more attendance and making sure that students are more involved and engaged when you're online. So we want to make sure that we keep that connection going. Another struggle for us, as Lisa pointed out, is the family engagement process. That has been a struggle, trying to get some families out and being a part of the school environment and being vested in the school, not just on progress reports or report card night, but invested in coming out and volunteering and supporting the school in whatever way and working in collaboration with the school. So that has been a challenge, and we are working heavily on ensuring that we bridge that communication and partnership with families and the school. And the last bit in terms of our growth areas, which I would say is us using, utilizing our instructional time effectively and stuff. So the leadership team is working, currently working with teachers to build their capacity around that and provide teachers with time and opportunities to collaborate, so that we can utilize every bit of instructional time to improve student learning. So that's just a quick overview of where we are at Wexler Grant so far. So I'm going to open up the floor for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Principal Dyer, right? Dyer?
Yes, Dyer, yes.
Dr. Dyer, have you identified the reasons why students are not attending?
Our biggest increase in chronic absentees is around kindergarten and first grade, K-2, to be honest with you. And so really identifying is that, that what happens is that when sometimes the families, they register their student and not realizing that, once you're registering in kindergarten, attendance is now being taken, students sometimes don't show up after they get registered. So that's a challenge. Another issue is that sometimes it was a lot of family issues that were happening in the younger grades, especially kindergarten. They had a lot of issues with family members, single-parent households, and things that going on with the families. And so we had to provide that support system and just trying to educate them and shifting that mindset that, yes, even at that age, that is the most crucial age for students to be in attendance at school every single day. So it's just an education, educating the families on how important kids at five in kindergarten and at grade, age fives and above, really need to be in school every day.
Bonnie, do you have any questions for?
I do. I think it's great to hear that the tutors are being as helpful, you know, to really see in progress with, with what you're doing. What ages are you seeing the most use of tutors? And is that something that could be helpful in your kindergarten and first grade?
All right. So the ages are from, actually from kindergarten to grade six, that's where we're seeing the most age. And you're talking about fifth grade to about maybe 10, 10, 11 age group. Really useful, because they're able to really learn our intervention programs that we're doing and going and meet those kids and really work with the kids that are struggling and reach out to the families and work with the teachers. And that collaboration has been really a good cycle. In fact, right now, if we didn't have the tutors, we would be in a lot of problems in terms of reaching those kids that sometimes are just struggling just to get logged on, just to be engaged, because you have a smaller group of kids that the tutors work with and can show a little bit more compassion and workload with them and more attention to those kids, which sometimes those are the students that need that attention more than anything else. And in a bigger classroom, it's a little bit difficult, especially when you're on a Zoom call or Google Meets classroom. You're not reaching every kid as you want to. So they're able to do breakout rooms and pull them to the side and work with them on areas that, that meets their learning needs.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Erin?
Yeah, I have a, I have a few questions regarding attendance. You had mentioned in your narrative incentives. Can you name some of those incentives that you've done for attendance?
Yes, we had had attendance breakfasts where we include all the kids that for great attendance and for improved attendance. We wanted to do a couple of things, and we did it on like a rotation, which is like a quarterly. So every quarter, every student start out fresh. Because if we were to look at it from starting September to June, a lot of kids would not be incentivized or even motivated to do it. So every quarter, we would normally look at, let's start fresh, let's see where your attendance is. And we would do attendance breakfasts where we invited all the family members of that student. We make it big announcement, we do a big promotion about it. And we also do attendance awards ceremony and celebration. That's prior to COVID, right? Where everybody could assemble and get a certificate and stuff, or little prizes that we'll send home. We also wanted to give students, we're able to do some McDonald's or something where we send home to families. And so far, we started doing it now, where we start coming out of our own pockets and buying these little treats that we know, once we did a survey with students, families, and staff, of what they would like. Because just doing the attendance, we weren't getting a lot of people coming out every morning or every afternoon. So now we had to do something where we could reach the families and really highlight students that were improving on their attendance and highlight students that had perfect attendance. And get those students that are not attending to be attending because they are seeing these highlights.
And then you, you mentioned in the, I'm like referring to the write-up. There's, you mentioned your leadership team is working with community partnerships. Are any of those community partners helping or could they help with the attendance issue?
We worked to some point with Varick. We worked with Pastor Atkins. And yes, they, they helped a lot, because these are the pastors that go out in the communities and the families are familiar with. So I wanted to reach out to them, and we always have like, every year, we had a Thanksgiving breakfast. They did a big thing. So they had a lot of connection and collaboration with families. So they were able to support and help us bring in, encourage students and their families to come to school. We also work with the Aldo woman, Janet Morrison, as well, that had a lot of, she was the Aldo woman for the district here, that has a lot of connection with the families. And she was able to speak with families and have them come out and share that importance of attendance. We also wanted to start working with Judge Greaves, who we would have come out and just shared with families how important, when we noticed their attendance were getting a little bit chronically absent every day. So these are some of the partners that we were actually working with and continue to work with to make sure that families are educated.
Yeah. Because that can be, that can be very helpful when, you know, a community member reaches out to these families and they'll look at it as, oh, this is serious. They're actually getting these other folks in the community, you know? They're telling, you know, them that, you know, my kids aren't in school. And that could, that can really be a big help, you know, to the families. And interesting, I don't know if you've ever done this, but I can recall, I always think of when there's these problems with attendance. I worked with the school at one point, it had similar, similar numbers like you did. And what they discovered, what they discovered really was the staff attendance in itself was pretty poor as well. And I started working on that first, and that really did change the attendance of the student body. I don't know if you've ever looked at your staff attendance in that way, but it was surprising to me, the correlation in this particular school. And it, once they started working on that, and of course, that's a cultural thing, which I know you're working on, that sometimes that will help with the attendance of the children as well. So I wasn't sure if you've ever looked at your attendance overall as your staff.
Actually, to your point, Ms. Benham, yes, I have, because that was very important. And one of the things that we actually looked at was different time periods in which staff would be absent and students would be absent, see that correlation to see what was going on. That was a major thing that we looked at last year as well and continually looked at. And one, another big piece is really the engagement factor in terms of lesson planning and what is happening in the classroom. That was another thing, because if kids don't find the classroom engaging or interesting, they are not going to want to come. They're going to, there's going to be that resistance. So there's been a big push and emphasis and support in working with teachers and staff. First of all, to come to school every day, that's a big push. Because when students see that, they know that you are invested in their learning. And the second push was to ensure that when you're planning lessons, their lessons are engaging and involving and involve kids to do a lot of activities and questioning that, going to really challenge kids and keep them engaged and on point. So those were the big push, because we know, especially now in a remote setting, where kids are easily bored and distracted. If you don't have an engaging lesson, and you're not there and showed up, you're going to lose them. So that's been the biggest push right now, to be honest with you. Lessons have to be engaging and powerful.
Yeah. And that must be very difficult, being all remote, you know? And having an attendance problem doesn't help matters by any means.
Absolutely, because now you have to look at the emotional, emotional factors.
Partners, and hopefully, they can assist you and, and help with those, getting those kids into school, you know, into attending, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Don?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Lopez, I did want to mention that Dr. Tracy was able to join now.
Okay.
She's on the call.
Okay, thank you. I, I am very pleased to see the improvement in the academics side, but disappointed to see the lack of improvement in the attendance. So you need to be, you know, cognizant that we are going to keep looking at that part of the equation, because of course, you know, so many children are not coming, you know? You have a very high percentage of children not attending. You know, what does that mean in terms of academic improvement? What does that mean in terms of, you know, progress and so on and so forth? So we're going to keep looking at that. I'm glad Dr. Tracy's in the, because I wanted to ask what sort of support you're getting from, from the superintendent's office? You know, how are you being supported in your improvement for this school?
So do you need me to? Double of me on, I don't know why. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm getting an echo.
Just so you know, Doc, there are two of you on, so.
I know. Well. I don't know.
What could be the phone? The other one could be the computer, you know?
No, the phone is not on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. And then we can see you now, too.
Can you mute the other one?
I'm muted.
The other one is muted. Now she's muted.
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. Could I log out and come back on? This is crazy. I'm going to log off and come back in.
I, I think, you know, we, we need, we have a, a large agenda, so if you, if you can do it fast.
Doc, you are fine. If you just speak, you're fine. Right now, we can see you and we can hear you.
Right.
All right, it sounds like an echo. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be.
You, you can continue talking. I'll work behind the scenes to see if we can get the other Eileen Tracy, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. So first of all, let me say thank you to this board for all the support that you've given to New Haven Public Schools over the years. I've been the mastermind behind a lot of these expressions of interest to get these schools to become part of the Commissioners Network, including Clinton Avenue School and now Wexler Grant. And when I was Director of Instruction, and now I'm on the other side of the coin. So I'm familiar with the level of work that the state has done in supporting New Haven Public School and for helping to transform our educational system here. Wexler Grant, one of our neighborhood schools, has been, one of those schools in terms of, when you talk about equity, has been way, way below the A-game with a lot of things. And we believe that in making it part of the Commissioners Network, we could do some transformative work here, not only around student academic systems, but also around transforming the culture of the school. And I have seen where the help has transformed not only the academic culture, but also the climate of the building. It was a building that no one actually wanted to send their children to. And under the leadership of David Dyer, we see where parents are really satisfied with what's going on. They were able to use the funding to get the thematic approach to teaching and learning, which the magnet schools around have. So how do I sell Wexler Grant when I go to magnet fair? That was one of the fears of the principal. But in having a theme approach, similar to the magnet schools around, he's able to also talk about what's happening at Wexler Grant. He utilizes what we call a data, data approach in getting his, his staff aboard. A lot of investment in professional development, not only with teachers, but with leadership development. And so those funding are useful to make sure that we continue that type of development, that type of transformation, and that type of intense professional development. Yes, we know that attendance is an issue. It's not just at Wexler Grant, it's throughout the system. Attendance in heavily minority area is an issue. And if you look across the state, it's an issue right across the state, not just with Wexler Grant. We have, they have been working with the YFC Youth Family Community Engagement Team in reaching out to families, Principal himself, other members of the staff have been reaching out to families to get students into school. But there's, bottom line, there's just so much you can do. There's just so much you can do. The incentivization, Dave has spent time giving out work. Right now, it's not a computer issue, because there's one-to-one technology. It's not a, what do you call, a accessibility or connectivity issue, because they all have access. So then the question is, what is the problem? Why are there still kids not attending, even now, even online? What is the problem? And we are trying to dig deep into that as a system overall. What is still preventing our students from not attending? Now, knowing that many families still are having problems with their jobs, having problems with, with mental health issues, having a whole lot of scenarios happening, we know it's a challenge for them as we go out and hear some of the challenges in the neighborhood. I don't know how many of you, probably, Lisa, know, have been into the Wexler Grant area and have a sense of the community that is there. I'm not sure how many have had that chance to see the nature of the community and what they're up against. So I know it's work to be continued, and I'm confident that David will continue fostering that work at that school, because he puts his whole heart in it. This is something he believes in, that he believes he can really turn that school to make it be a place where students want to be and families want to send their children. So I've seen that. I've been in the building. I'm not a superintendent who sits in the office. I'm around. So I've seen that. I've been in the building. I'm not a superintendent who sits in the office. I'm around in my buildings. I've been there, I've had conversation, I've been into classrooms and I've seen some of the things that are happening at the school under David's leadership. So that's all I have to say. I, I just wanted to say thanks to this team. For helping to support New Haven Public Schools more broadly and Wexler Grant in particular. To help them to make a change in the neighborhood for students.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Thank, thank you so much. Again, we, we know you're working hard. We appreciate progress. But we still expect, especially in, in the absenteeism area, that that will be a significant change. And I do know the challenges that are being described. But I do know also that there are places that have similar type of students and are able to attract them. And engage the family. So I hope you look at best practices. And try to, to use them, adapt them to your setting. So again, thank you so much for, for your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lopez, everybody, to move on to the next item?
Yes. Thank you again.
Under Tracy and Principal Dyer.
Okay.
Thank you. If we can have the Wyndham High School team now turn out their cameras.
So we can log off, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best wishes.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
All right, great. So next we have before you Wyndham High School, which serves grades nine through twelve. Wyndham High School is also currently in their third year of Commissioners Network and up for approval of an additional fourth year. At the end of this year. With us here today, we have Superintendent Youngberg and Principal Kavanaugh. From the department's turnaround team, we again welcome Iris White, point of contact. Principal Kavanaugh is currently in her first full year as the Wyndham High School principal. She previously served, served as the assistant principal and interim principal. As part of their Commissioners Network plan, Wyndham High School has developed three college and career pathways. And developed partnerships with many community organizations, including the Fire and Police Departments, Community Colleges. And the Eastern Advanced Manufacturing Board. A major focus of Wyndham High School's plan has been around improving the culture and climate. Cultivating the capacity of their leadership and staff, revamping the data team processes. And strengthening tier one instruction with an intentional focus on supporting their most vulnerable populations. Wyndham High School has cut their suspension rate by two and a half times since their baseline year. While that progress has been made, continued work remains to improve student achievement and attendance. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Youngberg and Principal Kavanaugh to continue the conversation. Dr. Youngberg?
Good afternoon, everyone. I see a whole lot of familiar faces. Mr. Harris, how are you? And some Bloomfield connections there. Desi, how you doing? Good afternoon, everyone. As, as Lisa mentioned, my name is Tracy Youngberg. I am the superintendent of Wyndham Public Schools. This is actually my first year as superintendent, but I was the assistant superintendent since July of 2016. So I actually can personally attest to the transformation that has happened at Wyndham High School. I've watched it happen. I've experienced it. I was in charge of teaching and learning as the assistant superintendent, so spent a great deal of time in the building. And can tell you that there's a palpable change. The climate and culture of the building has changed dramatically over the past three years. And I wanna thank, formally thank the entire committee for their generosity. We are a district that often comes up short at budget time. We don't get nearly what we request year after year. So the Commissioners Network funds have really helped us along this transformational journey. As well as the Turnaround Office. Iris White, Lisa, Desi, draw over these last three years. Have really helped to support the transformational efforts. And I know Pam is gonna speak to the specifics about the transformation, but I can just tell you in general. The transformational efforts are focused around the, the idea of developing really strong relationships with our students. About believing in, in their success. Around the idea that adults change instructional practice, which drives student achievement. And around professional collaboration. One of the biggest changes, I can tell you, because as the assistant superintendent focused on teaching and learning. I was in charge of all the PD and the professional development a couple of years ago was very difficult to push out. There was a lot of resistance. That is not the case anymore. It's an entirely different place. Pam has put some highly efficient, made some highly efficient decisions and have put people feeling like they're empowered. And it's changed the entire dynamic. And we've done that along with the Turnaround Office and the support of the Commissioners Network Funds. It really is a transformation that I believe is going to have an impact on the Wyndham High School students for years to come. So again, we appreciate your generosity. I know Pam is gonna speak to the specifics of the school, but she probably won't talk to you about how much her development and growth as a leader. Has been impacted by the Commissioners Network Funds. She has truly taken the feedback that she's received from Iris, from Lisa, from other members of the Turnaround Office. And turned it into practice. She spun it around and given it back to her staff and, and, and they've, they've responded. In a way that I wasn't sure in the beginning that they could do it. I mean, it really is a different place right now. She's also responded dramatically to the executive coaching that's been offered by Ellen Stoltz and Robert Henry. And again, she's taken those reflective sessions, she's taken the walkthrough protocols. And, and given the timely and constructive feedback back to the Wyndham staff. And they in turn are giving it back to their students. And it's really an amazing, I know it's exactly designed the way the Commissioners Network is set up to work. So I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that. I do think that we are going to see some even more dramatic changes and improvements coming in the future. The, the movement in the, in the pathways that were mentioned in the introduction, I think you're gonna hear some things today that will, that will make you happy about some of the things to come at Wyndham High School. We're all very excited and I just wanna thank the committee again for the generosity.
Thank you. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Dr. Youngberg, and thank you to all of you, especially to Iris and to Lisa. For their guidance and support that they've given us over the past three years. And I'm always very excited to share all about the work we're doing to advance teaching and learning at Wyndham High School. So according to the chart that you've had, we're going, I'm gonna address our highlights and also our growth opportunities. So to start out with, I'd like to talk about the decrease in our suspension rate. And I think that all has to do with the relationships and the change in culture that we've had at the high school. We've used the Yale Ruler approach to social and emotional learning. In our first year, we trained all of our staff, our teachers and our staff, our security guards, all of us. In the Ruler approach. And we used our, at that time, it was our PLC periods to do that. And then last year, we implemented the Ruler approach with all of our students. And I'd like to emphasize that this was a systemic approach. It wasn't just, we did do lesson plans during our advisory period where we bowled out different parts of the Ruler program. Such as the mood meter and the charter between the students. But really, it was an approach that we took with our students throughout the school day, all about building relationships. And checking in with students to see where they were and if they were ready to learn. So I really think that that Ruler approach made a big difference in terms of our suspension rate. We also took really a restorative look at working with our students. Where this was about maximizing instructional time, not moving kids out of classes. But really, instead of just saying, you know, you're in ISS or you're gonna serve a detention. It was about having some hard restorative conversations with students, whether those were with the administrative team. With our ISS coordinator, with security, with teachers. We had conversations and we, and you know, students got right back into the, into their classrooms. But I really think that the change that we had at the high school and that rate was just attributed to our. Approach using Ruler. The second highlight is the focus on our instructional practice. We did a bunch of things to advance instruction at the high school. From the administrative side, we had a calendar. We called it our sacred time calendar. Where these were times that our administration devotes to instructional walkthroughs and visiting classrooms to see what's going on. And we actually call it sacred time. We won't let anything get in the way of that. We use an instruction, well, until this year, when the Commissioners Network and the state came up with the virtual look fours. We had, we used our own instructional walkthrough form, which was focused in on lesson objectives. How the teachers were explicitly, explicitly teaching those objectives. And we looked at what are the teachers doing, what are the students doing? And how are the teachers monitoring the progress of the students during that lesson? And then we would give them feedback. This year, we're using the virtual look for too with our teachers. Another thing that we've done to focus on instruction. Is really making it very clear what our instructional focus areas are. Whether it's through the weekly newsletter, communicating with our staff during data team meetings. Our teachers would be able to tell you very clearly, what are you focused on to improve teaching and learning at Wyndham High School? And they'll tell you, we're focused in on our objectives. In making sure the students know our daily lesson targets, the graduate release model, student discourse. And rigor through leveled questions. Last year, we implemented a program which was really successful. And that was called, we called it Teachers Observing Teachers. And once a month with their data teams, our teachers would go out and we had a different focus each month and observe their colleagues. And their data teams would go out and whether it was, we'll observe other teachers in our content area. Whether it be, oh, we wanna observe other teachers in our grade level or interdisciplinary teams. Teachers would go out in their data teams, observe lessons, come back, debrief. Pick out one new thing they wanted to try with their students, one new strategy. And then they'd give feedback, positive feedback to the teachers they visited. So this year, that's a little different because of COVID. Well, a lot different because of COVID. So this year, we've switched it up a little bit and we are, we've implemented teachers teaching teachers. And on our Flex Wednesdays, we've had our own staff share out with, you know, their colleagues. How do I use Jamboard? How do I use NearPod? How do I use breakout rooms? How do I use cahoots in my classroom to better engage my stu-, our students? And so that's been a really powerful thing that we've done this year. Where it's our own staff teaching, you know, teaching their colleagues. Also, last year, we were very involved. Our staff really, we offered optional PD through CIRC. And we're doing it again this year. Our staff loved it. They attended PDs on racial equity, teaching and learning, special education. SEL and behavior support and student and family engagement. That was very successful last year. And I'm working with Evan McNee from CIRC. We're setting up the same kinds of PDs to happen this year with our staff. And also in terms of professional learning, many of our staff, about half of them, signed up for the Yale Certificate Course. Social and emotional learning in times of uncertainty and stress. So our staff, I think, are, we built a culture where our staff are continuous learners. And they, I mean, if you could see them, they are so devoted to planning and implementing lessons to engage our students. In terms of the leadership team, we're very grateful for the Netstat conferences, the pop-up PDs. And especially for the executive coaches that have worked with us to advance our practices here at the high school. And when I was thinking about this presentation and the kinds of changes that Dr. Youngberg was talking about. I realized that our retention rate at the high school is very high, our teacher retention rate. So the changes that have happened have happened with veteran teachers who have been here all along. And I think it's the culture of trust that we've built. And that they feel empowered to try new strategies without like getting in trouble if something doesn't go right. They work. Just all of this continuous learning, I think, is based on this culture of trust. That we've been working really hard to build here at the high school. The next thing that's a highlight is our concerted focus on the SAT. A couple of years ago, at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about how when we trained in Ruler, we had professional learning communities. We made a very conscious decision to turn those into data teams. Teachers meet in data teams of small data teams with about three people that teach the same courses as they do. And they meet in their data teams three times a week. And we changed the focus from professional learning communities to data teams. So that we could really focus in on using data to drive our decisions and our instruction. So in our data team, so we have at this time a data coordinator. We have a data room that people, where the data teams meet with all of our student data posted. We have our data binders so that the other data teams that come into the room can look and see, you know, what are the other teachers focused on in the building? And then we also make data team targets very clear each week. So that the teachers know it's not like a random, random work. They, they have very targeted goals in our data teams. So through that, with our focus on the SAT, we develop mini SATs. And the mini SATs, we give four times a year in English and math. And these inform our data cycles and our instruction. We look at the results from the mini SATs as a whole school. And we were very conscious about, you know, what could our whole school, our PE teachers, our art teachers, our music teachers, everyone focus on. And the two things that we decided upon were words and context and also evidence from text. And so you can see those kinds of things in, in the instruction in all of the classes in our building. In our data cycles, our ELA and social science teachers focus on analyzing nonfiction passages. The math classes focus in on all of the different standards in the SAT. And also procedural strategies like using graphing calculators, making sure students know how to fill in the grading questions. And in science, our teachers are especially focused in on the nonfiction, but also analyzing infographics and charts and graphs. One thing that I think has been very successful is conferencing with students about the SAT. And we've had goal-setting conferences with every student in grades nine, 10, and 11. And the individualized goal-setting conferences, students pick with their teacher. What works best for them to advance their learning towards the SAT. Whether it's mini lessons, whether it's having a small group lessons, whether it's individual practice using released items. SAT study groups. So students are actually picking what they think works best for their style of learning. Another thing that's worked is a very deliberate approach by the school counselor and administration. Just about forming the groups that will take the actual testing administration together. And being very back in the, you know, a couple of years ago. Would just be alphabetical order, putting the kids into groups for the SAT. And we've been very deliberate about grouping students so that they're, they're most successful during the testing administration. Other focuses towards the SAT would be the use of Khan Academy. Our counselors working with students to sign up for the College Board Opportunity Scholarships. And we had two winners last year, one, one, $1,000 and one, one, 500. And then the Commissioners Network helped us with the Kaplan SAT prep course last year. And our students are busy signing up. When I looked last night, we already have about, last night, 73 students signed up for the Kaplan SAT prep. That's going to start in January of this year. So it was interesting and I was really pleased. Last night, I was talking to our data coordinator for the high school. Last night, I was talking to our data coordinator for the high school, and I was talking to her about this, you know, this segment of the presentation. And she thought, as a teacher, that one thing that has really made a difference over the past couple of years is our positive messaging about the SAT. Instead of it being drudgery of, you know, oh, it's just another test we have to take, we really have a growth mindset that we developed and a positive outlook, where teachers, you know, have posted, you know, goals in their classroom for the SAT. They've talked about data displays, hanging up work with feedback, displaying posters about the SAT. The teachers have organized for the past couple of years SAT pep rallies. Teachers have put together little SAT snack bags for the kids. So it really is an approach where it's a really positive approach to, let's show them that this is an important test, and let's show them how well you can achieve on this test. Another thing, sorry.
Pam, no, it's okay. I do want to give the, the committee an opportunity to follow up with questions. So maybe we can take a break right here and allow them to ask some follow-up questions.
Thank you, Lisa. And Don, do you have any questions for Principal Cal?
Yes, I do. First of all, hello, Dr. Youngberg. It's good to see you. Been a long while since our days in Bloomfield. While I am impressed with all the good things that are going on, I have to focus back on the attendance. We're basically, about a third of your kids are not there. And I, I really want to know what you're doing. You talk about attendance incentives, outreach to families, including home visits. How is that going? And do you have any signs that it has improved?
Right, so I hadn't talked about the growth areas yet, but with attendance, that is definitely one of our growth areas. Our biggest initiatives right now that we are doing to improve attendance are one-to-one attendance mentors with our staff, so that students that have attendance issues have been paired with staff members, whether it's a teacher, a coach, me, somebody, you know, any member of the staff, and they connect with the students, sometimes daily if this teacher has a student in class, or weekly where they have conversations with students. We also have built a partnership with Eastern Connecticut State University across the street, where we've had, which we cannot do this year, but we did it until COVID ended and want to resume it in the future, where we've had attendance mentee program where the students from Easter come on, come over, and they come over during the lunch period and have lunch with our, some of our students who have attendance issues, and they build relationships with them, they help them out with, you know, assignments and things like that, but really focusing in on attendance that way. So those are our two biggest initiatives right now. We do have a bunch of different attendance incentives that we've tried, where we've had like brackets with March Madness, or we've taken advisory groups or classes and seen who's the attendance winner. We've had an attendance carnival for the past couple of years, not this year because of COVID, where community partners have come in and celebrated, you know, the importance of attendance with our students. We've mailed attendance postcards home to, in two ways. One, every Friday, we mail home perfect attendance, and every couple of times a year, we'll mail home attendance with a little graphic that shows what is your attendance compared to the average attendance in the school. Right now, we're in the middle of a Period Six Sweet Treat Attendance Challenge because we noticed that attendance was dropping off after lunch, so we're doing an attendance challenge with that right now. Last week, we're celebrating that one hundred of our students had perfect attendance for the week.
All right, so you, you feel it has improved?
I feel we have structures in place to improve our attendance and to really continuously work. I mean, we're working, that is one of our very clear goals. I'm sorry.
In a school in a virtual, completely virtual, or you had a hybrid model, or?
Right, right now, we are, oh, sorry, Pam, go ahead.
You can go, Tracy.
The high school actually moved to virtual due to staffing constraints on December tenth. We were in the hybrid prior to that.
But you are taking attendance.
Of course, absolutely.
You've got some ideas on whether it is improving or staying the same or gotten worse?
Yes, we're, we're definitely tracking it, and we, our, our focus is to improve attendance. We were spending a great deal of time trying to, to plug holes on credit, on the credit recovery side, and it would be a lot easier to have them in the seats, getting the instruction when it's being delivered, absolutely.
Because you mentioned March Madness as one of your incentives, but we didn't have, we haven't had March Madness for two years now, so that's a long since passed, so I'm, I'm more concerned about what's going on now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
It's, it seems that, it seems that to improve attendance, you have to know why the students are not attending. Have you, have you identified that?
So our attendance coordinator and our family liaison work in tandem. So students who aren't attending, our family liaison makes phone calls and organizes home visits to talk to the families. I think it's a little different now in COVID, where we actually have, we've developed a Google form for the whole staff to use, all the teachers, along with the attendance coordinator and the family liaison, where they've put all the different parent contacts that are being made in any way, trying to reach out and making sure that any student that's not attending school, that we've reached out to them, and if we haven't been able to contact them by phone, that we're, you know, going out to their homes. We have identified, especially last year, when we closed down due to COVID, we learned that, you know, some of our students had decided to work, or they were babysitting younger students. So at the start of this year, we tried to, you know, publicize and make it very clear that we're, you know, this is a, this is real school, you need to attend school during these hours. When we, you know, when we closed due to COVID last year, it was a little bit different, where students were, you know, attending based on their own schedules, where some of the students, you know, would attend, you know, when, after they got out of work or that kind of thing. So we're really trying to stick to, these are the school hours, and making it clear to parents and students that this is when you need to come to school, and that, you know, attending Google meets is not, you know, optional, because that's when teaching and learning are happening.
Good, thank you. Bonnie or Erin?
Yeah, I just have one really quick question. You talked about the, the peer mentoring that your teachers do. Do they go through professional development to really refine that skill for peer mentoring? Or is it just something that they, that's evolved?
So at the, when we had Attendance Works working with our school, they told us about that idea, and we did do some PD about the kinds of things that they could do with their students and conversations they could have. But right now, I would say, no, I think it's more about checking in and, like, everybody who has an attendance mentee has, we started out by, we didn't just randomly assign them, we tried to have some people pick who they were going to work with based on a relationship they already had, whether it was they were their coach, they were their teacher, they knew them because, you know, they knew them in some other kind of way. So it's basically building on relationships that they already had with the students.
Thank you. Erin?
I just have a.
Erin, let me go, Woody. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a few comments, like, I'm going to go back to when Superintendent Youngberg first said at the beginning how there was such a big change in this building. And then listening, Pam, to you, I could see, I could see why. You know, you certainly have put in a lot of initiatives over the, it seems like you've put in a lot of initiatives over the last couple of years that you, you keep talking about trust, and I can, you've obviously gotten that when you refer to, you know, the optional PDs, and more than half of your staff is going to these optional PDs. I mean, that in itself speaks for itself, you know, for them to be going to the CERC and the Yale. I love the sacred time. I, I think that's fantastic. I think that's something that even your teachers will recognize, that that is a sacred time, we're going to take it very serious. I know it's a little difficult now that you're virtual, but I think that is, so I guess what I'm trying to say, you put, it seems to me, it seems like you put in a lot of pieces in place that hopefully you'll see the, the uptick in the academics, and attendance will improve, because it does seem like you have it certainly in place with your staff. I mean, your staff seems to be just the peer-to-peer, I mean, that's a great thing for teachers to have. And then to switch it up now, you know, teachers teaching teachers, and there's, you know, I, I was a teacher for many years, that the best kind of teaching that ever have is having another teacher teach you, because it's the easiest way to learn something, and it's the most comfortable way to, to learn it. So, you know, kudos to both of you. I mean, I just, I was saying to my, thinking, Lisa, if once we get to visit schools, this is one I'd like to go see, because I think you would see a difference walking into the building, so. And let's hope that all these things put in place at this difficult time. You'll see the results that you obviously worked very hard to get.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes, you mentioned that your teacher retention rate is high, and that's good. And I would think that that might make it difficult for you to increase the diversity of your teacher force by hiring new teachers. Is that something you're working on?
We are working on the diversity of our teaching force, and we are very proud that we have in every department now a teacher who teaches Spanish. And like Erin was just saying, you would be thrilled that one of our new teachers that we did hire to teach social studies, in fact, Iris was able to see it when she came to visit, he had on his, he speaks Spanish, but he had our students teaching him how to speak Kiche. And on his board, he would have the words in English, Spanish, Kiche. I mean, so we really are looking definitely with every new hire to, you know, expand our diversity. But every department now has somebody who speaks Spanish in it, at least one person.
Thank you.
And I hope you let me brag about our pathways if I have a moment left, because I really wanted to share that if there's time.
Briefly, because we, we have another group coming in, so be very brief.
Okay, very briefly, we have our three pathways that Lisa talked about, but I have to say that working with our Wyndham Hospital, our fire department, and our police academy is really exciting, and our police department and our fire department have said, we want this partnership because we want to hire locally. Our fire department is going to be coming in to work in, so that the students graduate with EMT certification. And our police department is working with us, in fact, they said that they would like us to have a vetted pathway, they, they're working with us, they've given us the police academy curriculum, which our social science teachers are going to embed, and they're hoping that we are the first town in Connecticut to have kind of an AP program with the police force, where our students could graduate with a certificate, opting them out of part of the police academy work. So we're super excited about that and working with the police department, with the Wyndham Hospital. We've set up that with, through the different courses that we have leading up to possibly CNA or medical terminology certificate. So we are developing certificate programs in every pathway through our new courses, but very excited. Even the police department, when we've been meeting with them, said they can't wait for the state's attorney to find out about this, because they said, quote, they would be elated about this partnership. So I'm really, really excited about the pathways, and I think that having kids in these pathways will improve attendance, because they will be so connected and feel responsibility to complete with an internship and with a certificate.
Hey.
That was as brief as I can be.
Pam, could I, could I just jump in really quickly and ask Superintendent Youngberg, oh, I'm sorry, Woody, did I, I'm sorry, I, I'll get in line. I'm all, okay. Superintendent Youngberg, can you just say something quickly about sustainability? So once this partnership ends, can you talk just briefly about what are some of the things that will carry on beyond the, the high school's time in the network, please?
So absolutely. So we are working really hard. Part of my leadership philosophy in general is the idea of sustainability. I speak to my leaders on a regular basis about making sure that they leave the organization. Every day, we leave the organization better than it was before, and that we're always looking at our second string, third string, how are we moving people, training people, so that we never drop the ball, and we're always moving to the next level of achievement? The pathways that Pam is so excited about is one of the cornerstones, I think it's going to be a true transformation of this high school, and the connections we're making to the, the local agencies that she's just named. Not only does it put our families in a position to have their, their children to, you know, obtain good-paying, strong jobs and continuing to be members of this community, but it, it changes the mindset about who these kids are and the way the community views them. So I, I feel like all of this work that we're doing, it's not going to go away. You know, we, we struggle with budgets, that's, everybody knows that for sure, but we, we're committed to making sure that they're improving the lives of each and every one of these students, which is why we hope, we're, we're strongly betting on some of these connections, improving our attendance, because we know the kids are going, they want to go to work, and some of the reasons they're not showing up for school is because they are working to help support their families. And so we feel like this is an opportunity to show them, we can get you a good-paying job, you can still help provide for your family, but you can finish high school and potentially go on to get, you know, college degrees and, and specialized certifications along the way. So we feel like it's all connected, and we, we don't want to lose any ground, we want to just keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Woody? Okay, you're fine. Thank, thank you so much. I think it's very exciting to hear the work that you're doing and your approach to creating sustainability, to connecting to the community, and so on and so forth. I do have to express our concern with the absenteeism. And also, I think, I, my, my suggestion would be, rather than say, this is what we've been doing, because I don't want a list of things you've been doing, what I want is, of everything that you're doing to improve chronic absenteeism, what are the ones that are having impact? It's not, it's really about impact, it's not doing twenty things, it's perhaps doing five things that have impact. And we're trying to learn from each one of you in terms of how is it that you are engaging your students and your families to ensure that the students do attend. So again, I, I, I enjoy seeing the, the energy and the activities, but I want impactful things that make a difference. So again, thank you so much, I appreciate it, I'm glad to see that you're moving ahead, I, I worry about transitions, and I do, Wyndham is, has a place in my heart, I love to go to the city, and like Erin, I hope we can visit, and we want to wish you success on a joyful holiday. So thank you so much for coming today.
Happy holidays, and please come visit us, we appreciate you, please come visit us.
We will, we will, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lisa?
Thank you. All right, if we can have the New Beginnings Family Academy team join with their cameras on.
This is Don Foley, Chair of the Board, I apologize, I can't get in on the GetApp.
It's okay, this works, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so lastly, we have New Beginnings Family Academy. Joining us today is Ronell Swagerty, Chief Executive Officer. We have Colette Pearson, Elementary Principal, Laura Turner, Middle School Principal, and Don Foley, Board Chairperson. In addition, we also have our charter team here, Rob Kelly, Felicia Canty, and Jakira Jacobs-Basquez. The focus of today's meeting is to provide an update on the progress of New Beginnings. Their latest renewal was in the spring of 2018, where they were granted a three-year charter renewal with probations and conditions to improve academic performance in ELA and math. New Beginnings has worked very hard with the turnaround office to identify root causes and develop a corrective action plan. Since then, they now have a common curriculum and programs for both literacy and math, and strengthen their progress monitoring processes. As a result, progress is evident in both ELA and math. Most notably, New Beginnings exceeded the state average when
when looking at the average percentage of target achieved in both ELA and Math in 2018, 19. New Beginnings has also been very responsive to the technical assistance and professional learning opportunities offered their way by the State Department in their effort to continuously improve. So at this time, I will turn it over to Executive Director, 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 excuse me, Ronell and our team to speak to some of those significant changes made to teaching and learning which resulted in these gains as well as continued growth opportunities. Ronell?
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. And your entire team in the turnaround office. We appreciate the support that we have gotten from you guys over the years and the accountability. It has been wonderful, especially during this pandemic. We see how hard you guys are working and we consider ourselves a beneficiary of it. Hello, committee members. With me today are Colette Fieron and Valora Turner, MBFA's Elementary and Middle School Principals respectively, and Don Foley on, um, the telephone. He's our President of the Board. We look forward to updating you and answering any questions you have about the work of MBFA, which serves 499 low-income Bridgeport students in pre-K through eighth grade. When MBFA underwent a fundamental pedagogical shift in 2015, the process forced us to take a few steps back in terms of student outcomes. While it certainly did not look or feel good to see our scores dip, I have to say it was well worth it. MBFA students emerged stronger academically and adults emerged as a community with a deep understanding of child development, empathy and respect for the role our students' life experiences play in their ability to learn, as well as strategies to inoculate against the traumatic histories that threaten their long-term success. MBFA's emotionally responsive approach consistently helps maximize instructional minutes for all students by reducing behavioral infractions and keeping suspensions under 2% district-wide year after year. And it has steadily reduced chronic absenteeism, at least until COVID-19 hit. We believe in the power of empathic adult partners to help children, mass, children master foundational developmental milestones for social, emotional, well-being and learning. MBFA hires qualified adults who look like the children we serve and whose cultural competencies ensure deep, meaningful relationships. Fifty-three percent of our total staff is comprised of Black and Latino individuals. Fifty-seven percent of our school leaders are people of color, including the three of us who are on today's call. As are 53% of our direct service providers, including our teachers and our social workers, our school nurses, and full-time instructional assistants in each classroom. Since we last met in 2018, MBFA has designed and implemented a cohesive literacy curriculum to ensure that our Tier One, Two, and Three instruction, intervention, and progress monitoring. We've invested in instructional materials and resources as well as ongoing trainings for teachers and their instructional assistants. We have doubled the size of our literacy team to include reading specialists, a literacy tutor, and an instructional coach. While we recognize our students' needs in both ELA and Math, leaders made a strategic decision to prioritize literacy to leverage more than two decades of reading experience on the leadership team. This does not mean that we have been negligent of math. We have not. Leaders and teachers are being developed in math this year so that we will be better equipped to design an equally robust mathematics framework in the coming years. So I want to talk a little bit about COVID. Teaching and learning under the immense stress of a global pandemic cannot be overstated. I'm sure you know that. And yet, MBFA's community has maintained professional standards while forced to learn and do at the same time. We have availed ourselves of a myriad of professional training opportunities offered by the turnaround office and others. At MBFA, we have a saying, "Stress travels in one direction," and that's up. The teachers and social work team hold the children's and the family's emotions. The leaders hold the teachers. I hold the leaders and board members hold mine. This core belief considers the personal well-being of every member of our community and it has equipped us to serve students, families, and one another under the duress of COVID-19. While there certainly are challenges to online learning during a pandemic, I can say that the majority of MBFA students continue to access the academic, social, and emotional supports they need to grow. I welcome, we welcome, any questions from the committee.
Thank you. Erin, do you want to start, start off?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, good. I see Woody, Woody already has.
Uh, congratulations on the diversity of your staff.
Thank you.
And, uh, what is your secret?
It's a slow process, um, and it's multi-layered. It's word of mouth. It's, it's advertising. Um, we have a human resource, resources office, um, that involves a full-time manager and a part-time recruiter. And we avail ourselves of every minority teaching, recruiting job fair that there is in the state and sometimes we even go out of state. So it's multi-layered.
Can you say anything about the, uh, what you've observed for, of the impact of, of your diverse force?
Um, so research has shown that children fare so much better in environments where they can look up and see adults that look like them. Um, it, it certainly does help with their self-esteem. Uh, and in our model, which is incredibly emotionally responsive, it's, it helps to have those cultural competencies uh, among the adults in the room so that children feel connected. Connection is key. Relationship is key. Um, and not saying that if, you know, the relationships can't be established by others, but it certainly is nice for children to be able to, to have so many people in the, in the district who look like them.
So you've actually seen.
To be relatable.
I mean, aside from the research, you've actually seen an impact?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Not only among our students, but their families. You know, we have, um, a number of staff members and our two leaders are, are, um, have immigrant families, quite frankly. You know, and I've sat in on meetings with the leaders where they've broken out in their patois language, their native patois dialect in order to relate better to the families. That has been incredibly successful as we try to give our families different strategies for dealing with children and relating with the children and helping to be strong educational advocates for the children. It, it helps on so many levels.
And I'll share as well. My name is Valora Turner, Middle School Principal. Um, what's also been beautiful with the diversity is even within the sex. We've increased, um, our hiring of just males in our school. And in the middle school, it has been a beautiful thing to see my boys fall in love with reading because their language arts teacher is a male. Um, the middle school building for the first time is really male-heavy. We have one female teacher and everybody else is a man. And so when we got our teacher who started last year as an instructional assistant, he came in and he really talked up reading. He modeled reading during free time. And when he took on the responsibility of being the language arts teacher this year, the students really gravitated to that. So there's a passion for reading. They're having after-school book clubs that they're starting up. It's all voluntary. The kids are trying to see how they can get their hands on a real book because in this digital age, they're sick and tired of using a computer. And so, um, I will say from even that perspective, we can see the tangible evidence that the diversity within the school population is really impacting academics in a positive way.
That's wonderful. It's great to hear.
Thank you. Don, do you have any questions? Here.
No, I don't have any questions. I'd just say a quick comment. Um, um, I'm extremely impressed with everything that you're doing. And, uh, keep doing what you're doing because you are an advertisement for diversity. It works.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Harris, if I could just piggyback on that for, for one second, I just want to say here publicly, I remember Ronell, the day, you know, the whole charter team descended into your office and the first day we met. And from that day, it was clear that, that Ronell was willing to, to face the challenges head-on. Wasn't about making excuses, you know, was about moving her school forward. And I just want to say, I remember that and I, I'm so proud of, of the work that you're doing with this team and, um, just kudos to you and, and, and your team on this one. Nicely done.
Thank you, Tessie. That means so much. Thank you.
Bonnie, do you have any, any comments? Any?
No, I'm just going to load on the praise again. I mean, I, I think it's so fabulous that there's just such positive role models and it's really playing through. I love the fact that when you talk about reading and putting books in hands. Um, man, that is, that is just so huge. And I see that it really plays to your growth opportunities and, and again, just kudos for, for being your own amazing role models to the kids that you serve. And thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, uh, I want to just know in terms of in the improvement of the academics. I know there's never one thing. It's a multiplicity of things and it's intentionality. But what do you think have made the biggest differences? What, what strategies, what practices have made the biggest difference in improving the academic part of the school?
I'm going to let Mrs. Fieron answer that one.
So, um, I will say that I joined MBFA in 2019, 2020 and, um, the, one of the differences that I have noticed since I have been here is just the, in the shift in our instructional practices. And, um, that all began by us looking at our instructional framework and, um, restructuring that, right, to ensure that we have a multi-framework, that, uh, multi-level framework that allows us to provide a robust Tier One instructional program. But then in addition to that, when you look at our, you know, you look at our data, you know that our student, there are quite a number of students who are in need of intervention. And so what we did for those students was we made sure that we have, you know, an instructional schedule that had an intervention block built in so that there's, uh, reading specialists that Mrs. Swagerty mentioned, our instructional coach, can push into the classroom during that intervention block to deliver, uh, you know, targeted instruction to students. So it was just really restructuring our whole framework, instructional framework, to ensure that those key components of each content area were, were able to be delivered on a daily basis and not just delivered, but also monitored, right? So we've implemented different progress monitoring tools and put protocols in place to make sure that we can look at student data and use student data to inform next instructional steps. I will also say that the curriculum resources that Mrs. Swagerty mentioned that we've purchased ha, ha, um, as a school has, um, shown to improve our students' academic performance, you know, just really taking time to look across different, um, instructional programs and before we purchase them and using data to inform those, um, purchases or, you know, or the, um, acquisition of those, um, materials. So it's knowing, it's, you know, for us, especially with our growth in literacy, is knowing the important pieces of literacy and, and understanding the literacy continuum and knowing what children need, what type of instruction children need at certain stages along that curriculum. And then knowing how to look for the appropriate resources with the appropriate best practices, instructional practices, to be, to have that knowledge and informed knowledge to know what to bring into your school. And then being aware of where that one per program falls short so that you can anticipate additional resources that will need, will be needed to fill those gaps.
Thank you. Thank you. Very, very helpful. I know your board chair is present and, um, I just want to make sure that.
Could I ask just one? I just, I just want to ask one question, um, because what you were talking about, Colette, was at the beginning, I guess you had said that you doubled your language arts. Um, is that something that you're going to be able to sustain once outside of this partnership? I mean, is that going to be, I'm, I'm just wondering about it. I'm sure the funds helped you to be able to do that. And then you said you're now going to work on math. Is that something that's sustainable? I mean, are these folks are going to be able to stay as support systems?
So I'm going to take that question because it's a financial one. Um, you know, the short answer is the charter schools are woefully underfunded. We could talk about that for hours. Um, but for New Beginnings Family Academy, those positions are sustainable. They're not, you know, in addition to the, the flat funding that we receive from the state, New Beginnings does have a small development department that helps us close the guaranteed gap that we have in our operating budget. So I have, we have a priority, you know, and those priority positions are secure. They are sustainable. Um, and when it, at the end of the day, when we find ourselves falling short in a budget, we don't look to cut the critical positions that help children learn. You know, we cut other things in other areas.
Okay. I, I'm glad to hear because it does seem like that, that increase certainly has helped you a great deal.
Certainly has.
Yeah. Thank you, Erin. Again, I just wanted to acknowledge the presence of the board chair and, um, mention to him, although we cannot see him in the call, that, um, it's obvious that the school is being supported and we, we expect that that will continue. That the support of the board is critical in ensuring, um, a result. So we are pleased to see progress and we're pleased to see the significant improvement, especially in the academic side. And we hope that, um, what you have learned become best practices for all the schools to learn from you. So, thank you very much. Lisa, anything?
Thank you. And, sorry.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I, I, we're constantly supporting our staff or administration, our teachers because we realize that we're dealing with some real pros here. You're picking that up right from their presentation. They've got a methodology. We had a little slip fall maybe about four or five years ago when we changed over. We probably changed over a little too rapidly. We took a step back and when I became Chair three years ago, I realized probably the best option for me was to step the board back and let our administration staff basically develop the programs that were going to succeed. We turned it around. Uh, we got them the resources. We brought in some, uh, teacher development staff. We brought in a group called Metamorphosis, uh, to help us with our, our, uh, both our language and our math programs and how we're teaching those sort of subjects. Um, when we went down in March in terms of the COVID, we turned around as a board very quickly and authorized the purchases of Chromebooks and had 500 of those Chromebooks delivered by, I believe it was mid-April to end of April. And we were back in business again. So we, we know that we're dealing probably with creme de la creme here and we just wanted to support them and stay out of the way. And so that's what we've, that's been the formula for the last three years and I think it's been working.
It is working. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lee, and again, we want to wish you a very happy holiday. Lisa, anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. And to the whole New Beginnings team, you know, this was very hard work and it continues to be very hard work. But the strategic approach that you are looking at every single student and determining what their needs are and creating and implementing a plan around their needs is showing in the data that comes with the smarter balance. That average percentage of target achieved, that eventually will lead to greater growth in the SBI. We understand that. So continue to do what you're doing. Continue to look at the benchmark assessment data in the meantime, you know, in the absence of the smarter balance. Use that and continue to dive in and, and build a, a program, um, and supports for those students. Keep shining, New Beginnings.
Thank you.
We will.
Thank you. Thank you. Li- Lisa, I, I have two items that I, uh, that are not in the agenda, but I, I want to ask you. So once the, um, New Beginnings leaves.
So thank you.
Okay, so we can.
To the New Beginnings team.
Let me see, how do we do this? Bye-bye, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Lisa, the, 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 the first item was, um, in the, in November meeting, we heard about, um, uh, that we were waiting to hear about, um, teachers being certified for the charter schools that came before us at that time. Were you able to get new numbers or you're still waiting for them to, uh, to, uh, to be submitted to your office? Because we want to make sure that, uh, that we have them.
Sure. We have them. Um, how. Sure, we have them. Um, however, they are, have not been uh shared with the schools yet. Um, so that is going to happen within the next two weeks. So if we could wait um two weeks so that the schools can receive the data first, and then I will share with the committee, if that's okay.
All I'm going to ask you, are they, are they good numbers?
They're much better. Much better.
That's all. That's all. We can wait. Then the second thing, I hope your team is present. I really wanted to thank eh your office, um Irene, and all your team for the incredible work you're doing. We've been um seeing updates since the beginning of the semester of schools that were challenging uh situations, and we're beginning to see a lot of improvement. And although not everybody has achieved the expectations that we wanted, you can see that they're all really comfortable with getting your support and your um, you know, your help. So I, on behalf of the board, I think I wanted to thank you, make sure that your team, we never thank you guys, you know, because everybody leaves the meeting and, you know, we can't thank you. So I wanted to make sure that we could thank you, and if we were better grouped, the Accountability Board members, we would sing to you, you know, eh, a Christmas carol, do something like that. Of course, we haven't practiced, so we cannot do that. But really, from the bottom of our hearts, um, um, thank you so much for, for all the work you're doing in, in a very difficult time, extremely difficult time, and, and um and I hope you know that you have our support. Above all, you have our support. I, I, I invite my fellow board members to, to add anything that you wish to say, so.
Here, here. Here, here. Well said. Well spoken.
I would just say, as a new board member, I wasn't sure exactly what I was going to get into. You guys have been amazing. For, for those of us that are new, you've been just helping us understand each step of the way, what needs to happen. And, and again, as the new beyond the group, um, thanks for, thanks for helping it be a lot more understandable than I, than I thought it might be.
Thank you, Bonnie. Very welcome. I am very blessed to have the team that we have here and couldn't do half of the work without them. I, I am thankful to, to them as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I, I, yeah, I really don't have anything else for the conversation that we, we could have after this meeting, so I don't know if you think we need to have it. Um, we will do it. Otherwise, I think we, we're done.
Lisa, I just had, we, it is just us on the call now, isn't it?
Right.
I don't know if there is. Um, I, I am a little.
No, I, I would, you may want to, um, thank you, Matt. I think it might be best, Dr. Lopez, if we adjourn our meeting here and then, okay?
Okay. And I, and I have to turn the lamp on because my, my, my room is getting very dark, so it will allow me, so. I'll leave and we'll come back. We'll do that. Okay.
Thank you.